I like that.
Let's call the Wilmer City Council Meeting of October 7th to order. Kevin, would you read the roll, please?
Mayor Yanish. Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dawkin. Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlique.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any proposed additions or deletions from the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, there was one.
We can pass it, and then I'll just have a comment on them, that's fine.
Is that kosher?
Yeah, if there's just a comment, um...
Okay.
It's just a comment, you can go ahead and...
You have to bump me. All right. So, we'll come to you, we'll vote on them, then we'll come back to you. So, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that passes. Okay, Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's the proper address for the Mayor Pro Tem? Is it Mr. Mayor or Mayor Pro Tem? That's not my question. I'm just curious.
I believe Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I noticed the windmills still aren't moving, and I'm just wondering if we're going to get an update sometime soon again.
Councilmember DeBlique may have an update, otherwise I will talk to the utility general manager. I don't know, Councilmember DeBlique, if you have any additional new information?
I don't have any new information from... It was in the minutes of the last commission meeting.
Okay, I can check with the utility manager.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone signed up? I don't believe there was, to speak to us on the open forum. Okay. Then we'll go to the Labor Relations Committee report for September 17th, 2013. Councilmember Ammon.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We met September 17th in conference room one at City Hall. People present were Mayor Frank Yanish, Bruce DeBlique, Councilmember Kevin Halliday, city clerk Steve Okens, Ken Warner, Wilmer Lakes area Chamber of Commerce Beth Fisher, David Feist, David Demuth, and Susan Steinert, Convention and Visitors Bureau boards, and David Lohr of the West Central Tribune. Meeting started 4:47. Ron started out the meeting, I arrived late. Item number three on the City Council Planning Retreat. The committee discussed what they hoped to accomplish with the planning retreat, and suggestions included holding the retreat off-site, a review of the roles and responsibilities, review of the city charter, additional training for council members, and a personality profile such as the Meyer-Briggs assessment. We also should have included in there that I believe we're going to reach consensus as to when this should take place, and I think we're under the understanding that it would be after the holiday season, or after the first of the year.
It's in the minutes here, October or November.
October, November.
If that's incorrect, Councilmember, we can certainly amend the minutes.
No, that's fine. If we can get somebody at that time to be a facilitator.
Yeah, I apologize, that was my understanding at the meeting, if it was possible, and if not, then after the first of the year.
No, after the first...
If you'd like the minister to reflect that, we can certainly make that change or amendment.
No, I'm sure we can find time, if we can find a facilitator. Carl New was suggested as a facilitator, and it was also suggested to hold the retreat until November. Later in the meeting, it was suggested that following the rollout of the Vision 2040 Plan, it might be also appropriate to meet in January to consider the long-term plan for the city, because I believe the report's coming out November 20th or something?
That is correct, November 20th is scheduled for our... For the date to unroll that plan.
Unveil it, okay. Staff was directed to return with additional information, the matter was for information only. Item number three was a review of the contract for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I stated and requested that Convention and Visitors Bureau contact... Contract be placed in the agenda as a periodical review of the contracts. Mr. Ken Warner was invited to address the committee regarding the history of the contract. Mr. Warner and Kevin Halliday reviewed the contract between the city and the Chamber of Commerce for the purposes of Convention and Visitors Bureau services, as well as how the employees of the CVB Convention and Visitors Bureau are compensated. Ms. Fisher reviewed the various services provided by the Convention and Visitors Bureau and some of the annual goals the Chamber of Commerce Board has put on her for her performance. A few suggestions were made regarding an update of some of the language, such as typewriter, and this information was for... Information was only for discussion. Item number four was a discussion of goals and objectives for the city administrator. Ms. Stevens reviewed some goals and progress on the same to date, based upon previous discussions with the city council. And after some discussion, it was suggested that the goals could be refined as the year went on, but that it was a good starting point, and this matter was for information only. Being there, no further business, we close the meeting at 5:45, and I move to file the minutes, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Item number three, to do with the planning retreat. Were RFPs sent out for facilitators, or were we just contacting Mr. New? Or his name was in there, but...
The city clerk's been working on that, so he can give you... He can best respond to that.
At this point, we've contacted two consultants that we believe could meet the needs that we're looking at. Carl New from Colorado has given us a complete proposal with his fiscal costs, and Bruce Miles from Big River Consulting out of St. Cloud, it's been used by a lot of cities, has given us a proposal, not complete, and we are meeting with him at 11 o'clock on this Wednesday. And subsequent to that, we'll recommend one of the options. Knowing which consultant that you would choose will then open up their dates and match with your open dates. So, they're all over the calendar at this point, we can't ask you to pick some of your favorite dates to meet. So, that should be coming out the end of this week?
Was the month of November in there, though, for...
October 26th is in, and the whole month of November and January.
Okay, so they're aware of it, then, the two of them?
Yes, they are, of those dates.
Was the second one you mentioned from League of Minnesota Cities, or how did we get ahold of him?
I did some contacting with fellow city clerks, who they have used, and that name was highly recommended. The league might have them name... That name also, I don't know.
Can I safely assume, then, it's going to come to a committee to discuss it? I mean, both of the proposals...
Yeah, it would come back to the Labor... It would come back to the Labor Relations Committee and make a recommendation.
Okay, thank you. And then I had one other question on item number... It says three, but it's actually four, the review of the contract for CVB.
Oh, you're correct, sorry about that, that isn't here.
The... I think something should be mentioned in the minutes as to one of the questions, a big question, was bonuses, because bonuses were received by this... We get her title.
Executive Director.
Executive Director. And that was one of the main discussions in there. I think that should be part of the minutes, that we did review past bonuses and... Bonuses that could be coming toward the end of this year. Something like that in the minutes, if you could.
Okay, we can do that, would you... We can do that, I think... We'll just do that. I was gonna say, you could make a recommendation to amend the minutes, but we can go ahead and do it.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, Councilmember Nelson.
Probably would be good if that's being added to put the structure of the salary, that the bonus is part of her annual structure and the requirements for her to obtain that part of her salary.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, that passes. All right, we will go to the... I think it's Finance Committee.
It is.
Finance Committee, and I'll deal with that. This is a Finance Committee meeting, it was a full council workshop on September 30th, 2013. Purpose of that work session was to discuss the mayor's proposed 2014 budget and to receive a funding request from the Wilmer Lakes area community marketing coalition. The first item was public comment, and there was no one there to comment. Second item had to do with the 2014 proposed budget. Councilmembers were provided a written report reflecting detail by department for the travel training, subscriptions, membership, and professional services expenses incurred to date in 2013, the department requests for 2014, and the mayor's proposed reductions for 2014. City department directors also reviewed the detail of these expenses with us. Councilmember Christiansen questioned whether or not the city can legally pay for the community ed and recreation membership in the Rotary Club, and the answer to that is yes, it is in their personnel policy, so that is acceptable. And then Councilmember DeBlique asked for the amount of the Safe Assure contract. That was provided to us in an email, and the amount was $6,840. The capital improvements plan for 2014 through 2018 was presented. Staff... A staff committee reviews all proposed projects using specific criteria to rank and prioritize them. It was noted that these projects are funded through bonding, state aid, cash, and special revenue funds such as local option sales tax. Councilmember Christiansen raised several questions, including a concern about spending $200,000 for downtown gateways. He also asked us if the city could perform the facility study in-house rather than contracting it out. Concerns were raised about the lack of a canine unit in the police department. We requested that the canine unit be a specific discussion at the November budget meeting. Councilmember Ammon suggested that the city contact professional commercial building inspectors to address the public works garage issues. The vehicle replacement policy was presented. Councilmembers Christiansen and Ammon raised a concern about the life of vehicles used. Councilmember Christiansen also felt lawn mowing at the waste treatment plant could be contracted with outside sources rather than purchasing a new mower for the use of the plant. The third item was a community funding request. We reviewed a funding request of $2,000 from the Wilmer Lakes area community marketing coalition for 2014. This was... Had been on an earlier agenda, the individual couldn't wait through the end of our meeting, so we got this as a written thing. These dollars would be used for advertising campaigns promoting the Wilmer Lakes area, such as the banners recently placed on light poles along First Street. We asked... We again noted that the mayor's 2014 budget does not include contributions to community groups. Item number four, we talked a little bit about what's coming up. At our October 14th Finance Committee meeting, we'll be getting the budgets from the EDC, the HRA, and we will also be getting the 2012 audit presentation. Under Old Business, council members were provided with further information from the West Central Integration Collaborative regarding hours of translation services provided to the city of Wilmer to date in 2013. Councilmember Christiansen requested the same information for the past three years. There was no additional new business, so unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
Councilmember Ammon.
Just a correction on the minutes. It states here on the middle of the page, front page, that I suggested the city contact professional commercial building inspectors to address the public works garage issue. It wasn't just the public works garage issue, I was addressing the line item in the budget for hiring a engineering firm to evaluate our buildings, and I don't know if that's absolutely necessary. My intent of this was to have a commercial building inspector would be much more economical to hire than an engineer to look at the efficiencies or the inefficiencies of our buildings for energy... Energy causes, and evaluation of the structures also.
That's so noted, and I think staff will consider those options as they review them. So, if we can get that noted. Any further questions? If not, all in favor of filing the minutes, say aye.
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 Opposed, that motion passes. Consideration of certification of unpaid utility charges as a lien? Clerk Halliday, are you going to handle that?
I will, sir. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, you should have before you a resolution listing a variety of properties that have failed to pay the utility bills from the time period of about November 1 of 2012 through their hearing in July of 2013... Or September, there it is, September 9th of 2013. Pursuant to our code, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission has held public hearings, granting everybody that was on the list an opportunity to come and voice their concerns or objections of why these unpaid utility charges should not be placed against their property as a lien. Nobody came to make any comments. The commission adopted Resolution 36 on September 9th, asking that the council certify all these listed before you as a charge and a lien to be collected by the county auditor in the calendar year 2014. It is staff's recommendation that we adopt the resolution.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilmember DeBlique. Introduce the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second council member. Yes, Attorney Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. My recommendation in working with the Wilmer Utilities staff at this point regarding two line items on this resolution you're considering, specifically line items number 27 and 28. Those both relate to the Willow Run 2 apartment building, and I believe that the owner of that facility is in bankruptcy. Though we believe we have authority to certify these items, two taxes along with all the others on the resolution, at this time, given the happenings in that bankruptcy proceeding, the recommendation is to approve this resolution with the exception of line items 27 and 28, which should not be certified.
So, we can handle that by amending the motion, or withdrawing, or which way?
An amendment would be fine, too.
Okay, so if we could get someone to amend...
Yeah, friendly amendment, taking...
Taking out numbers 27 and 28. Is a second there? Okay.
Second.
Yep.
Thank you for that information. Is there any further discussion? Is this a roll call?
Yes, sir.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem, Anderson.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlique.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is authorize the engineer to prepare a feasibility report for street and utility work for 2014 improvements. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Pro Tem, Anderson, members of the council. Bolton and Mink, our acting city engineer, has begun the process of planning for the 2014 improvements. We've had several meetings with them and have compiled a list of streets needing reconstruction, overlay, and even a couple of sections of new construction. We've worked with engineering staff and municipal utility staff to make sure that everyone's on the same page as far as the projects being selected for 2014. At this point in the process, it's necessary for the council to move the process forward by adopting a resolution that would order the improvement report, and that is the recommendation of staff.
Discussion? Councilmember DeBlique?
I'll introduce a... Is it a resolution to order the improvement report?
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Was there... Is that a second?
I'll second it first, if I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
My question is, is the cost of this report, do we have any anticipated dollar amount here that we're looking at?
In terms of... It would be... Bolton and Mink would charge us at their kind of current hourly rate as city engineer and such, and this is really to begin the surveying process and such. Even though we have interviewed and made an... And offered a position for a surveying tech, we just don't believe we're going to have that individual in time to get some of this work done.
I'm trying to understand, usually the city engineer would make the recommendations that... To see which issues need to be addressed. Is this something that has to be done now, or what are we looking at as far as...
It does not have to be done now. You know, the city engineer proposed a schedule, if you'd like to table it and take it back to the Public Works Public Safety Committee next week for further discussion, we can certainly do that.
Well, we could do that, that wasn't gonna... By delaying this, I don't know what we're really going to solve, but with a new city engineer that we're going to get on hopefully soon, could he be doing the same service?
We will not have this... We will not have a new city engineer hired in time to do this.
That's my question I need to know, thank you very much.
Further discussion? Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. The map that was attached... Is that proposed fixes for 14?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see anything written out, it was just... It's just locating them, basically, right?
Right, it shows the locations of the streets that are proposed for reconstruction, overlay, and new construction, which is the industrial park expansion and then a connection of 12th Street southeast from Wilmer Avenue North into the Perkins Edition.
Okay, to the far left, then, that's the industrial park part.
Yes.
And that's lost funds, I'm assuming.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I have a kind of a follow-up question on that. You know, in the budgeting process, there's been some talk of perhaps diverting some money to doing additional streets. If we decided we wanted to do that, would it be prudent to hold off on this? Or are we really getting too delayed, then?
I think then you would be getting too delayed. I think it would be wise to go ahead and start the process with what we have. I think we did anticipate the additional dollars for overlay that the council had allocated last year, so that's factored in. If there's beyond that, I think we would be better at that time to add those rather than delay all of...
Okay.
All of those. That would be my recommendation at this point.
The part that's critical right now is getting someone into the field to do the topo work in the neighborhood, so that we've got all our control elevation set for the design.
And the issue with that is clearly we want to do it before there's snow on the ground, so that's why we try to do it.
I understand, okay, no problem. Councilmember Ammon.
Well, just one other question, is he also, or the engineer, going to be evaluating the streets that need overlay also?
Yes, I mean, we have a pavement rating system, and these streets have come out of that and been recommended by our engineering staff, and our engineering staff, engineering techs, and then with the city and with Bolton and Mink serving as our current city engineer, but any city engineer we hire would continue that process.
So, the streets that could be, or should be overlaid are not addressed in this map, correct?
They are, there are some that are addressed, yes, they are factored in. The ones that are overlay are shown in...
Yeah, I see some of them.
In blue on the map.
I see all that.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, there was some discussion on the Lakeland Drive by the HRA apartments. There's been two or three potholes that... Almost about half the street's been replaced because of frost boils. And I'm just wondering, I thought that was going to be in the project.
We can take a look at that one additionally, and I'm not sure if that's in this, or is it factored into the Lakeland project?
I'm not certain which section of Lakeland Drive, Councilmember...
Not Lakeland Drive, south of... Or, excuse me, east of Lakeland Drive connecting to 19th, around the Wolsheer apartment buildings. The entire streets there are crumbling, and they look like brick pavers versus a street.
Okay, that'd be like 7th Avenue back in that area?
Yes, it'd be 7th Avenue, that's correct.
That did not show up on the pavement rating for reconstruction this year, but we will go back and reevaluate that.
Okay. And my question is, at the point of replacing these streets, again, I don't want to... Well, I guess I'm repeating myself as far as our structure of our streets, but I think what's happened here is we're not maintaining our streets enough, and we should be milling and overlaying these before they get to the point where we have to reconstruct the whole thing. I think we've been deferring maintenance on these, and we should reevaluate our policy and what we're doing, and I think we should be getting... We should get caught up somehow with milling and overlaying some of these streets versus repairing and replacing the whole street. And I don't know if the engineer's going to look at that, but I would surely highly recommend him looking at that and coming back with us to report. And if we need to spend the money there, streets and infrastructure, I would rather see our tax dollars go there than anyplace else.
Okay, Councilmember Nelson.
Just a question, when we reconstruct a street, is it not because we need to do something below the surface?
Typically, a reconstruction is triggered by a complete failure of the pavement and usually accompanied by complete replacement of water main and sewer, one or the other, or both.
And sometimes to that... To follow up on that, Councilmember Nelson, sometimes that does... How we do reconstruction, we work with the utilities to make sure that they can also do the utilities at the same time, so sometimes it may change a street that we want... That we would reconstruct, maybe they're not ready to do utilities, and maybe we'll try to get it by another year, but we try to kind of come to a mutual understanding there on those. So, there is a factor of that, the utilities, but it's generally driven by the road conditions first.
Okay. Councilmember DeBlique?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, just a question on... There's a section of 10th Street northwest, north of Park Avenue. One time I mentioned whether or not that should be part of a city street or not. Bruce, have you had any discussions with that property owner on that item?
To the best of my knowledge, that has not come up. Is that that very small L-shaped right-angle street that goes north of Park? Is that the one you're referring to?
Yeah, yep. It's the same property owner on each side of the street there, now I believe, so...
And the discussion is whether or not it should be public?
Right.
We should look at vacating it, possibly?
That's my possibility.
I will take...
Especially now that we're looking at reconstruction on that section.
Take a look at it.
Okay, any further discussion?
One other question, sorry. I brought up the subject of the condition of our downtown parking lots. I believe, were we going to be overlaying the one by Frieda's Cafe right next year? Is that... I don't see that highlighted, or is that just in the assessment? Are these just on street assessment streets, not in public parks? Or public lots, parking lots, and things like that?
I am not sure that we have... I'll have to go back and look at the parking lots to see if we were going to do one. I don't know that we are... I don't know the answer to that question. This is... Will be for the streets. But I will take a look at that parking lot and see.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I don't believe there are any parking lots in the CIP for 2014, but I think there are a number of them that come due in 2050, if I recall correctly.
But we will take a look at that, Councilmember.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize the engineer to prepare a feasibility report for street and utility work referred to as the 2014 improvements. Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlique.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That passes. We're down to old business, is there any old business? Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Last month, I introduced a motion, and we tabled it. It had to do with putting somebody from the Labor Committee on the hiring committees for department head supervisors and confidential employees, and we've been advised by our city attorney that it cannot include supervisors and confidential employees. I guess I have to move to take it off the table first, right?
That would be appropriate.
Okay, I move to take that tabled motion off the table for discussion.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to remove that item from the table. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I would like to restate the motion. Is that proper, Kevin, or do we have to start over, or eliminate supervisor and confidential employees? What would be the proper move?
We would... I should have been prepared. At this point, you're dealing with the exact motion you took off the table.
Okay, I would like...
If you don't like that, you can amend your own motion.
And that's what I wish to do, and I see Mr. Scott raising his hand over there.
That's correct, you need to amend the motion.
Okay, I would like to amend the motion. Okay, I would like to amend the motion. Let me restate the motion. It's pretty simple. It says, "I move that we, the city, the Wilmer City Council, adopt a formal written policy that states the Labor Committee chairperson or his/her appointee from the Labor Committee be on every hiring committee involving the hiring of department heads, supervisors, and confidential employees, period." I would like to amend the motion and delete supervisors and confidential employees and just have department heads on there only. That's a motion to amend, right?
Yes.
Okay, I move to amend it as such.
One second.
I have a question of our attorney. Is this appropriate with the contract, the ordinance that we have? Is this appropriate?
Mr. Mayor Protem, this amendment to the motion is consistent with the opinion I rendered, which was the motion could not extend to cover confidential employees and supervisory employees, but that under the existing city administrator ordinance, it would be consistent with that because the city council has an ability to approve any hires for department head positions.
Okay. Questions? Comments? Councilmember DeBlick?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. I just, to be opposed to this, I just don't think it's a policy, persons should be serving on any type of the hiring committees for city staff. I think that's our city administrator's responsibility. And the approval is just the approved with the city administrator. Any hiring committee that they would put together would be, I would, not in favor of this.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Nelson?
Yes, I agree with Councilmember DeBlick. I believe from the charter, the intention of that charter was for the city council to be able to approve the hire of the department heads, not to be involved in the hiring process. I understand that the city attorney has commented about that. I would have concerns about who would be on that committee, and the message it would send both to candidates and to the staff. We should be involved, we can be involved in making that decision and report with it. I do not support someone being on that committee. And I think there is training that needs to be done when you're involved in the hiring process with that. And if that is something that needs to go forward, then I think it needs to be limited. There needs to be training provided so that, or, you know, what is the role of the person sitting in on that hiring committee? I believe that there is a good process in place. It's worked, worked well with the hiring that has been done, and I am against having a city council person be on that hiring committee.
Okay. Further comments? Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'll just reiterate my reasons as was stated at the council meeting last month when I made this motion. We as elected officials are directly responsible for the services delivered in Wilmer, whether it be police, fire department, public works, street, municipal utilities, electricity, waste treatment plant. And because we're elected to do this job and to make sure that these services are given to our citizens, we need to be involved with hiring the department heads. They're gonna take orders from our administrator, and we just, I just want to make sure that we get the right person for the job. And as far as experience in hiring and training for being on a hiring committee, I think everyone here is familiar with doing that. I speak for myself on Amon and Tim and Mr. Fagerly. I mean, we've been doing this for 30, 40 years, and there's no secret to hiring the best person. Some people make mistakes sometimes, but I think we're directly responsible for these services delivered, and I want to be a part of it. I want the Labor Committee to be part of it, or somebody on there. It's one person on, I think there's four people on these committees, if I'm not mistaken, a typical hiring.
Change three.
Three. So one-third of it is from the council. It's like a liaison to many other commissions and boards that we have, the CVV, the HRA, utilities. I think somebody needs to be there. I really feel that way, and I think that it's best for Wilmer. I only, I only do what I think is best for Wilmer, and I think it's best for Wilmer that we do this.
I have a comment on that. I think it gets to this philosophy of trust and respect. You know, we, our big, one of our big duties is to hire a city administrator, and then we empower the city administrator to do a number of things. Hiring is one of them. And I guess I don't agree that there's no secret to good hiring. It's a big, it's a big task, and it's not an easy process, especially when you're hiring highly qualified individuals like what we're talking about. So I think the system that we have has been very effective, and I don't think we've had any mistakes in it, so I don't know why we would want to change it. So I am not in support of adding a council person to the hiring committee.
Mayor Protem?
Councilmember Nelson?
Mr. Christiansen, you made a statement that the staff work for the administrator. That administrator should have the right to create the team, to do that interview process, to go through and evaluate people who are going to work with existing staff, with them. That should be a responsibility of that. We still have the right to make that final decision, but the administrator, they work for the administrator, and that should be the administrator's responsibility to create that team. And when there is a hire to do, I don't know how we should have to be involved in that. I hear, I hear what you're saying, you want what's best. I think that we have an administrator who is capable of doing that, who has proven that she can do that. The process has worked in the past, it should continue to work. I don't think that that's something the city council should be involved in. That's what you hire an administrator for.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. You bring up trust and respect. I assume that staff also trust the city council elected officials. We've been through almost a year here of those two words, trust and respect, taken off the shelf many, many times. And I'm not doing this out of lack of trust or respect for anybody, but it goes both ways, from staff to the council and from council to the staff. And I see no reason why you wouldn't trust a council person to be on that committee. The department heads that are hired, we see the final candidate, basically from the three committee member, or three-member committee. We see, we don't see the three, four, five candidates who come forward. We should have a say in who we think might be the best department head. I see nothing absolutely wrong with that. I don't see it. We just see a recommendation. If one of us is there and we're one-third of the committee, I mean, you can be outvoted two to one, very easily. But I think it's important, and again, it might establish and help this trust and respect, these two items that are coming up quite often. I just, it's an idea, and I think it's a good idea, and I think we need to move forward with it.
I think I have, I need one clarification to make me feel a little better. What if, in the event that you were interviewing and we were making a selection and it was two votes to one, and the city council representative didn't like that person and is voting against it? Do those votes carry through then, and we make that selection at the city council? Or is the city council representative then going to be able to influence and argue the merits of the person? I'm just a little bit worried what's gonna happen if there's not a unanimous vote. So I guess I would ask you, Councilmember Christiansen, how do you see that?
Well, it's a very good question, Mr. Mayor Protem. I don't see that happening. That's a perceived situation that could happen, but I don't see that happening. We can get along better than holding something like that against the two people that are voting in if the council person did. I don't see that happening. It's just something that, there are a lot of other situations that could come up too with three members that, where there isn't a council person on there. And it maybe has happened in the past, I don't know, but three people usually putting their heads together will come up with the best solution. I don't, I don't see that happening.
Further discussion? We have?
Go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Councilmember Amon?
Oh, just writing down the pros and cons of this concept or this idea. Good to have ideas. Nothing wrong with talking about them. But what harm will it do if we're on there? If one person, or Audrey, or any council person wants to be on there, would sit in on the interview process? What harm would it do? You didn't even say anything. What harm would it do? And I guess another point is, who are they gonna be employed by? Ultimately, us. Does it hurt to have somebody in there? I don't think it'd do any harm. I don't think we're trying to interfere. I think it's, I think it'd be good to know a little more about the individual and kind of show the presence of the city council being there. I think there's different perspectives on hiring. I know there's different opinions. And as far as training for interviewing applications, I don't know how many people have interviewed employee, potential employees, but I don't feel that's a very good, I don't think we need to have special training for that in this particular case. Staff has done this for quite a few years. A lot of the more senior people here have done it for quite a few years. And it doesn't necessarily have to be a non-voting or a voting member, the person, just to sit in on the process and maybe give an opinion on things you see. I don't see any harm in it. I don't see any harm in it. And if it makes somebody feel comfortable, or if it makes staff feel uncomfortable, I'd like to hear their perspective and how it would make them feel uncomfortable if somebody was sitting in. I think that's what it comes down to. This isn't what we want, but we want to be collaborative with the staff, and if they think that's an intrusion, you know, we should hear now, because they ultimately will be part of the process. We're only here on one side.
That's good. That's a very legitimate question. And I'll ask staff if you have any thoughts.
I think the process that we have now works well. I don't think necessarily adding a council member to that process is going to improve the process. I think the process we use now, too, and I wouldn't say that it's always a three-person panel, I think that depends on the interview. For instance, when the fire chief was hired, that panel was a larger panel. It was myself, the police chief, a fire chief from outside of the area, and then also a firefighter was involved, as well as the EMS director, because there were individuals that work with that. So I tend to construct the panels for interviews based upon the position, and so I've used that in the past. I think looking at the department directors that may, in addition to myself, work closely with the individual, as I involve another department director, typically one or two, may look at having somebody outside the organization to give some perspective to. And that was why we went with an outside fire chief, was to give some additional perspective or, and the EMS director, because they were essentially, worked collaboratively, and I like to have that perspective. So I think that that's a good perspective. I think it does send a mixed message to have the city council involved in the interview process, and then as well as in the approval process. I think it sends a mixed message to the candidates in that, as to who are they going to report to? Do they report to the city administrator? Or do they actually report to the city council member that's involved in that interview process and such? And I think, you know, by nature, whether you intend it or not, a city council member on that panel might be intimidating to other members of the panel. Those are just my impressions on it.
Okay. Does anyone have anything new and different to add? New and different?
New and different to add? Just a question of Kevin. Is the motion now on the table since we brought it up? It has been amended.
Well, it hasn't been amended.
That's what discussing it.
Yeah, that's, in the purest sense of parliamentary procedure, this debate should have focused on the amendment, which pursuant to the attorney's opinion is controversial. And that's where we should have first dealt with it, and then the rest of this debate is on the main motion.
Any other discussion? I think we're gonna do this on a roll call vote. Please, Kevin?
And reminder, you're first dealing with the amendment, which is very simply to amend the motion to delete first-line supervisors and confidential employees. That's the amendment before you.
Okay.
Then we refer back to the main motion.
Just a point of clarification.
Yes.
I'm not for the motion, so if I vote against the amendment, we're back to the motion. Is that correct?
Well, we're voting on the motion.
To amend.
To amend it.
To amend.
And the motion, we have been told, is not something that meets the contract.
And we'll come to the amendment.
Right. But if I vote against the amendment, we're back to the motion, which is against the contract, correct?
That would be correct. That's a strategy. I understand where you're going.
Okay. Are we straight on it? Will you just read that just one more time?
We're very straight on it. Do you want a roll call on the amendment?
Yes, I do.
Okay. This is an amendment to delete the first-line supervisors and confidential employees from the main motion. Councilmember Amon?
Aye.
Nelson?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
No.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Four ayes. So that, the amendment passes.
Okay.
So we are now dealing with the exact motion that was recorded at the council 30 days ago, amended to delete the first-line supervisors and confidential employees.
Right.
It doesn't.
Go ahead, Councilmember Nelson.
Are we to discussion on the motion? Are we, this is discussion on the motion, is that correct? Or were you interrupting?
That passed, yeah.
Okay. I do see this as an issue of trust and respect, and I think that is an issue that Councilman Christiansen has. I have a major concern about that. I do not think it's appropriate for city council, and I do think there is training that is needed. We probably at this table have all hired someone. It is different to hire someone at a department head structure. That's why we hire an administrator, to know the laws, to know the rules, to be able, and I'll go back to building that team. I think there is an intimidation factor of a city council sitting in with that. You know, I am adamantly opposed to this. I do think it's an issue of trust and respect for some people on this board, and I believe that is inappropriate.
Okay, Councilmember DeBlick?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Anderson. I know we keep going back to this issue. I know Councilmember Christiansen, I agree with him, the city council is charged with the, running the city and everything that happens within the city. But we have hired the city administrator, and all employees that work for the city report to her, or that individual. And I think this is just, directly undermines the authority of the city administrator. And as far as her authority as being the supervisor of all the, of all of the city employees.
Do we, do we have, we have a motion in a second on this, on the amendment?
The amendment is passed, so the main motion that was made 30 days ago is before you.
Yes.
And it's, as amended, deleting, leaving only the department heads.
Leaving only department directors.
Will you read the motion, please?
Outside of the fact that the motion will match word for word to what was on the table 30 days ago, the motion is, in theory, set a formal policy that the labor relations chairperson or his designated appointee be on every hiring committee for the hiring of department directors.
Clear on that? Did you have a comment?
Just a comment that the designate, I think, I'm adamantly against this, but I do believe that you can't just have one person here, one person there. That's why you have an administrator. That's why you create a team. If you listen to the hiring process and the structure, I think it's been great the way it's been done. I don't know why. I don't know why we would want to mess this up. I think we have an administrator we have, have, need to put our faith and trust in and allow her to do her job, allow her to create her team. We have good employees. I think we need to stay with that structure.
Okay. All right. I think we'll vote. Kevin, I'd like this as a roll call also.
Councilmember Nelson?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Four ayes, three nays.
That motion passes. Okay. Anything else under old business? Anything under new business? All right. Committee meeting dates, Public Works, Public Safety?
Mr. Peterson, we have in one Tuesday, the 15th, Tuesday, the 15th, 4:45 PM at City Hall.
Thank you. Labor, Councilmember Amen?
Wednesday next week, if we can set it up to deal with that one issue, Charlene, did that work?
Yes, we believe we'll have information back. If we don't, we'll let you know, but at this point, the 15th.
15th will work.
16th for-
I'm sorry, 16th.
16th.
16th. Community Development, Councilmember Fagerly?
Yes.
On the 17th?
October 17th, 4:45.
And the Finance Committee will meet on Monday, the 14th, at 4:45. Okay, if there's nothing else to come before?
I have one item, Mr. Protem Anderson. Just as was mentioned earlier by our city administrator, that the visioning 2040 meetings will be held on November 20th. I believe there's one scheduled for-
11:30.
For 11:30 and one scheduled for later in the afternoon.
6:30 at, the evening one will be 6:30 at WIEC at this point, and the 11:30 will be at the Conference Center.
Okay. There's nothing else, I take a motion to adjourn.
One other additional item, Mr. Mayor?
Holy cow, all right.
The utilities is having a public power open house event at the Civic Center tomorrow evening. I believe it starts at 4 o'clock until 6, 6:30.
Correct.
Okay.
You say 4 to 6, is that what it was?
4 o'clock.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Christiansen, you had something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. On the motion that was passed here just a couple minutes ago, it might be appropriate for Mr. Amen, who was the chair of the Labor Committee, to appoint or be on the hiring committee for our city engineer.
You want me to comment on it? I'll think about it for a while.
Yeah, I think we, I don't imagine we have any more schedules yet, but that is policy now, so. Okay. Is there anything else? Move to adjourn. Is there a second? We are adjourned. Thank you.